Hello, Mike Hakko, and good morning. Mahalo for joining today's joint AEN, TCA, and CPN hearing. It's Thursday, February 6, 2025, and we convene here in room 229. And we're also video conferencing, which includes the audio and video of remote participants that's being streamed live on YouTube. So in the unlikely event that this hearing is cut short, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Friday, February 7. During AEN's time slot, any public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. And because of our 90-minute time limit, there'll be a two-minute time limit for all testifiers and one of the virtual countdown timer on the Zoom screen. So we'll start off with Department of Agriculture.
Good morning, chairs, vice chairs, members of the committee. Chelsea Arnot from Hawaiian Invasive Species Council.
Aloha, chairs, vice chairs, members of the committee. Chelsea Arnot on behalf of the Hawaiian Invasive Species Council. We submitted testimony offering comments on this measure, and we really appreciate the comprehensive look at biosecurity and looking at actions that can improve biosecurity for the state here. In our testimony, we really focused on Chapter 194, the statute that establishes the Hawaii Invasive Species Council being overseen by the deputy chairperson of Biosecurity at Department of Agriculture, which is on page 23, and then the establishment of the Invasive Species Council within the Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity on page 73. I just want to highlight that the council was established as an autonomous forum with the purpose of statewide coordination and policy direction for the prevention and management of invasive species. It's co-chaired by the directors of the Departments of Land and Natural Resources and Agriculture, and it has leadership representation from the Departments of Health, Transportation, Business, Economic Development, and the University of Hawaii. It's administered solely through the Department of Land and Natural Resources, and it's really important for the council to remain an inter-agency overarching forum. So it really focuses on that purpose and isn't subjected to one mandate or one jurisdiction of a single agency. So I'm around for any questions. Mahalo, sorry, I'm a little frantic.
Thank you, Chelsea. Next is Ryan Panikahole from DLNR.
He's at the house.
You're not Ryan.
But I'm here. I'm here, I'm here. The chair's going to come to this committee. You are important.
Good morning, Senate chairs and members of the committee. Don Chang, I am the director of the Department of Land and Natural Resources, but I am also the co-chair of the Hawaii Invasive Species Council. While DLNR has provided written testimony offering comments to the bill, I'd like to highlight some of our comments. DLNR seeks to support our sister agency, DOA, and would like to see them succeed. However, pending DOA's capacity to manage all aspects of biosecurity related to invasive species, that is not only their statutory responsibility, but also what is and has been the responsibility of DLNR. We would ask that the legislature continue to support funding for DLNR's efforts to manage invasive species to fulfill our mission to preserve and protect cultural and natural resources, because invasive species won't pause while we get our acts together. We specifically seek support on the following in our operational budget: $4.25 million for statewide invasive species emergency response, $500,000 for statewide support to Hawaii Ant Lab. In reviewing the submitted testimony, there is a broad range of support for DOA's work with the ag and ranching community to manage invasive species. We would urge you to support DOA's continued work with that industry. On the other hand, there is similar testimony in support of HISC as an independent agency working with DLNR on watershed protection, community collaboration, fire suppressions through invasive vegetation management, protection of invasive corals, not protection, eradication of invasive corals that can be devastating to our marine resources and fishing industry, and many other efforts by DLNR. The impacts of invasive species are not only a public health and safety crisis, but it is a devastating economic impact. While we support DOA's efforts, we would urge the committee to continue to support DLNR's efforts to manage invasive species and protect and sustain our valuable resources for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Next is Big Island Invasive Species Committee. Franny Brewer on Zoom, maybe it says in person.
Not available on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, Hunter Hevelin from the Hawaii Farmers Union, in person. Kristi Martin from Sea Gaps.
Aloha, chairs, vice chairs, members of the committees. Kristi Martin, coordinating group on alien species, Sea Gaps. We're all in support of protecting the economy, the environment, and members of the community from the impacts, the negative impacts of invasive species. We definitely agree on that. I think we disagree sometimes on the path, and so thank you so much for having this hearing to share some of our concerns about the bill. And just to clarify, we turned in eight pages of testimony, and I'm only going to highlight three of them. So Sea Gaps has concerns, serious concerns, about the possibility of impeding interstate commerce. When you move items into a transitional inspection facility and you charge for that service and you delay the delivery of those materials, you may be impeding interstate commerce, and that's a federal law. We also wanted to highlight that there's likely language in there that results in the inadvertent removal of authority to regulate pest movement within an island, and that's an extremely technical argument. But we were trying to bend Jonathan's ear to explain that outside, so we look forward to hearing, you know, what the department says about that. We believe it actually removes the ability to address pests like CRB within an island. And lastly, the Legislative Reference Bureau in 2015 provided a very long report about the HISC and how we're doing on invasive species. I urge you to look at that report and the recommendations. They didn't say to put the HISC into an agency, into the Department of an agency. They actually recommended elevating it. Mahalo.
Thank you, Kristi. Next is Brian Miyamoto from Hawaii Farm Bureau. Not here. Wayne Tanaka from Sierra Club on Zoom.
Hi, morning, chairs, vice chairs, members of the committee. Wayne Tanaka with the Sierra Club of Hawaii. We submitted testimony with comments. You know, just really want to thank the senators for digging into biosecurity challenges. You know, I think because of inquiries, you know, we now know that many of them have been exacerbated by, you know, the Department of Agriculture and its lack of proactive effort to take part in this, in our all-hands-on-deck fight against invasive species. And, you know, I think for that reason, among others, you know, we agree with many of the other testifiers that this is not the right approach to place the HISC and other non-DOA biosecurity programs under this new Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity. And, you know, I guess the one thing I'd add is, you know, the HISC and ISKs, what I've come to appreciate is they really understand how to harness the power of community in our fight against invasive species. And that's something that I don't think the Department of Agriculture is, you know, prepared to embrace at this moment. And, you know, that's why we see some of the things like the spending decisions that they've made with Act 231. Yeah, and I guess the only other point I'd raise is that, you know, now that we're creating this new deputy biosecurity position, given that it's unproven, we're not sure who might be appointed to that spot. You know, there may need to be mechanisms for accountability and follow-up to make sure that they are helping to achieve the vision of this bill should you choose to move it forward. Others have to answer any questions, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Wayne. Joseph Watt.
Thank you so much for the time today. My name is Joe Watt. I am a community member. I work at Key Project. It's a community center out in Kahuluiu on Wingward, Oahu. We have little fire ants up the road from Key Project, and I also have little fire ants at my uncle's house in Aina Haina. I wanted to emphasize my experience in interacting with all of the different ISK programs and the Department of Agriculture as we have worked towards eradicating these infestations. Already in the past year, the redelegation of funding to the Department of Agriculture has caused a gap in services at my house, so I would be happy to answer any questions about that. I also wanted to say that invasive species management has three separate prongs, and so one of them is stopping things coming in at the port, one of them is stopping spread on the island once they're established, and the other is eradication. For example, with the Koki captures going on in Waianaealo, one of the things that has been an issue is that the Department of Agriculture inspectors are not allowed to hike. So making sure that the agencies receiving the funding are ready to implement the programming that you folks are expecting, I think, is a really important thing to think about. In... Yeah, I think that's really what it comes down to, is that there's a gap in services that has happened already. There's duplicative efforts that are happening as, like, the Department of Ag showed up at my uncle's house two months after OIS surveyed my house because they said they weren't able to use the data. I'm not exactly sure why that communication is not going through. Nobody left information for my uncle on what to do because there were little fire ants there. We have not started treatment with HDOA. So those are just a couple of things that I wanted to emphasize. Really, the ISKs are the ones that have been extremely helpful to me in managing these invasive species, so I just wanted to emphasize that as a community member, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Next is Brandon Nazarian on Zoom.
Not available on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, that's all the testifiers I have who've signed up. Are there any, anyone else in person or online that wants to please come forward? State your name.
Aloha, chairs, vice chairs, and members of the committee. My name is Nate Dubey. I'm the manager for the Oahu Invasive Species Committee. We did submit written testimony, but I just wanted to highlight a little bit of what we submitted and make myself available for questions. Two of the topics that I wanted to highlight is just how massive of an undertaking biosecurity and invasive species management is. So trying to consolidate everything into one department really is not the best approach, in our opinion, at OIS. Making sure the coordination and collaboration is strong, that is an excellent goal, but I fear that we would be setting this date up for failure in consolidating it into any department. The second topic I really wanted to highlight is how well we've worked with the HISC and with DLNR and HISC as being facilitated under DLNR. In 2020 and 2021, when the Department of Agriculture let partners know that they would be pulling back from all Koki frog and little fire ant operations on the island of Oahu, HISC recognized the need to fill that gap, and they stepped up. They leveraged their limited state resources into federal funds, and that's the funding that OIS is using today to address little fire ant and Koki frog, as long as those funds are still available. And since 2020, I believe, maybe 2021, HISC has helped OIS raise almost $5 million in federal funds despite the limited state resources that we received. So I really just wanted to highlight how excellent of a job they've done in coordinating and filling gaps and helping OIS and the other ISKs across all the islands fill the gaps. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chair, there are two late testimonies from Robert Bentz and Ror Kares on Zoom.
Okay, yes.
Aloha, Chair. Sorry, but my testimony was late. I got an email. I think I supported this bill, but after listening to Wayne's testimony, I kind of agree with him. And that's the Eric Club. But I notice it's, I guess, mostly just, what shall we call it, mechanical. It changes everything from Department of Ag to Department of Ag and biosecurity. But on the first page, it talks about the hemp movement reports, and the hemp movement reports aren't helping biosecurity in any way. I just believe that that could be removed completely, and hemp should be treated just like any other plant, because biosecurity is incredibly important. I remember over 15 years ago, Misk come to my mom's farm, and all the bananas is good, so it's very important. I think the government, the governor might have cut some money for biosecurity last year, but biosecurity is very important, and I just think hemp should be treated like other crops. Mahalo.
Thank you, Robert. And who else online? One more?
One more testimony from Ror Kares.
Okay.
Aloha, Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of Ror Kares. So I'm just going to comment. The Biosecurity Act, so pays homage to the Cliff Sugi Act. I'm sure the son is very proud if he's watching. And so while the contents of this specific bill is very technical in nature, I'm not sure about where you put the HISC. But if the legislative process this year is amending something to enhance the Biosecurity Act, things to consider are Hawaii goals should be to decrease dependence on foreign imports, refine plant inspection standards at airports, and it should focus on federal funding sources to address invasive species. So specifically, I think what the bill should provide for in terms of funding parameters to meet these goals is to encourage Hawaii farmers to produce locally grown crops. For example, how to access funding from the farm bill from USDA, and also to legislate parameters for funding for safeguarding nursery plant inspections to protect from alien species. And what does not jump out at me are parameters of meeting federal guidelines to get federal funds in terms of asking USDA for more resources to accomplish these goals, because shouldn't... and I think this is just an opinion, that the legislative process should be leveraging that time to request those congressional resources instead of putting all the pressure on the department to kind of find funds. So if you've ever read the United States Department of Agriculture's biosecurity resources, you'd probably, like, have realized that it has 29 agencies organized under eight mission areas, 16 staff offices, with about 100,000 employees. Oh, thank you.
Your time's up, Angela. Thank you. Mahalo. Anyone else online? Members, are there any questions?
I have a question. Yes, for Mr. Watts, yes. I'm curious, when you mentioned that you did get fire ants on your property, can I ask you if there were any new plants that were brought in, like bamboo, within your area?
So what I found out from... So first off, thank you so much for the questions, and I assisted OIS in surveying the area around my uncle's house. What they told me was that a neighbor three houses up had a large landscaping installation that was put in, and the density of the ants was very high for how large the infestation was. So their assumption was that the landscaping installation brought in multiple infested plants.
The reason I ask that question is because that seems like, including our residents. We had a neighbor moved in, and he did his own landscaping, and tons of bamboo. He completely planted the bamboo completely around his property, which abutted many of our residents, and that's when it started, and we didn't have fire ants in our area. And in checking further, it seems like in our community as well, fire ants with the bamboo was one of the biggest pest provider within... I was just curious. So pretty much a lot to do with landscaping. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Chair, since I have a sir, what, follow-up? Sure. Clarification. Did you say at Kamaa Waih agency, they were not allowed to hike? Did you say that when they're not allowed to evaluate? Could you clarify that for me, please?
This was something that I heard while volunteering with the Koki hand capture. I think that the HDOA folks might be able to share more about the specific job limitations that their current positions have. I heard HDOA wasn't allowed to hike. And as a contrast, when I was working with the Hawaii Ant Lab folks, and I was... they came out to assist with a delimitation, super helpful. They looked at this super steep hill, and they were like, "Bro, give me some ropes. I'm going to go for that. That's very exciting." They're also jumping off of cliffs in Kauai in order to look for ants on the cliffs where there's a bunch of very important native species. So I just wanted to underline the fact that the capacity to do those things and really the things that we think of when we're talking about conservation are really far into the forest sometimes, and I think that that makes sense as a DLNR project.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the...
No problem. Thank you.
Just to add here with that discussion, in reviewing, you know, the comments about the hiking, it also, yeah, has to do with many of the areas in Hawaii with our gults.
Absolutely.
And so they need to be at least some training or whatever if we're going to expect them to get there. It's, yeah, and, you know, our gult system within our islands is kind of pretty dangerous and steep, so I think there's a lot of probably continued discussions on how we're going to do that, whether we're going to start doing it by ear.
Absolutely. Misk, also a HISC program, did a great job of little fire ant eradication on Maui for a huge, huge section at Nahiku. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Senator Coy. So Jonathan, how big a change will this bill bring to the department, and how difficult will it be for you to fill the additional positions provided for the bill?
So right now, the... With regard to the 44 positions, 20, I believe 22 of them are for PQ. So we're working on, I guess, finalizing the recruitment. I don't completely understand the HR portion for the inspector positions and so that we can get them, get people in, hopefully. And I think one of the challenges is that, right, the funding technically ends June 30th, so I think getting permanent people for those types of positions is going to be a little difficult. We do have, I think, right now, for at least Oahu portions, I think it's five people that we've interviewed, and they would qualify at 89 days. And so I think once we can get past the HR issues, we'll be able to get those folks in. And, you know, and I think in the department's testimony, we do talk about some type of phasing of this, because a lot of this stuff, the transitional facility, the rapid response teams, and then the training and all that kind of stuff, they require rules and standards, a lot of education and outreach, and how long each of those will take, I honestly can't specifically speak to, but they are some pretty substantial changes that are quite different from what we do now.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Anyone else?
Can I clarify? So you're... The 44 positions is referring to the funding that was provided last year.
Correct.
It's blank on the positions in the bill. How many people do you think you need, well, I guess in the initial phase?
So in the initial phase, if you, if we can get the 22, that would enable us particularly to kind of go back to, what is the, what, when was it? 2010 levels, around the 2010 levels of inspectors, so like, that's right before the RIF, so like, when I got laid off the initial time. And also, obviously, that would bring back our night shift on Oahu, so basically you would, what do we do now? More than, oh, pretty much double. You would double coverage. We, in Honolulu, you would have, where we'd be working 6:30 to 1:00 a.m., so you would pretty much have almost 20-hour coverage. We could man the pest hotline, you get quicker responses. And then obviously, you would be able to have additional capacity to start getting into not only these rules, but amending a lot of the existing regulations that I think do need updating. Yeah. So, but I think the long, the long and short of it is, I think, a lot of the other bills have significantly increased either inspections or commodities to inspect, and as those come up, you're going to need the people to do this, the work, I think, over time. And I think what those look like over time will, I think, kind of lay out as we get past, I think, the initial hurdles that we're at now.
Okay. Anyone else? Chair. Senator Rich?
Thank you. Just following up on a comment that was made, Mr. Watt, about the hiking for inspection. Can you comment on all that?
So I'm not aware of a, you know, I run plant quarantine. I've never made a directive that says anyone cannot hike. But a lot of the stuff that we do, that are done, particularly as it relates to like Koki and LFA, are on some kind of treacherous stuff. And, you know, again, we're generally more, I would say, the urban response. So as you get into a lot of these areas, you know, I allow the staff to make a judgment call. They're not required to go and scale a mountain. And if they don't want to do it, again, I don't want anybody getting hurt. And, but, you know, I think to that being said, like, the Kuli'ou Koki issue, we were... they notified us, we went out, and we, you know, and then we worked together with everyone. So it, there was never, I think, a blanket thing, but we really allowed the staff to be safe. People have different limitations, and I think, you know, getting into the, I guess, that nexus between like urban and natural area and how you, I guess, address that, you know, like, again, like, as a lot of the other folks have said, you know, the DLNR folks and the Oahu, the invasive species folks, you know, they have specialized training, they have helicopter gear and all that type of stuff. We don't do that, right? And, and I think that's one of those gaps that we're going to have to fill, I think, long-term with regards to like how we want to deal with biosecurity in general. And, and I think, just as another comment, I think as it relates to biosecurity and tying into an agency, you know, there's a lot of, I guess, because we're in the Department of Agriculture, that we only do agricultural goods, and that's not the case. We regulate Mirtaceae for importation. That's primarily for watershed protection. We have rapid Ohea death regulations, right? Those are not agricultural issues, right? And realistically, wherever the regulatory agency is placed, doesn't really matter where you put them unless you put them in like DLE or something, you're going to have the agency's overarching mission, and where it needs to be, be part of the agency or the, you know, plant quarantine. You put us in DLNR, it'll be more conservation focused. You know, if you put us in DOH, it'll be more health-focused. And I think as the regulatory agency, right, biosecurity issues are biosecurity issues, and we need to figure out ways to address them for everyone, because they're not necessarily one industry or one segment or whatever issues. And I think, you know, I think the department has been getting kind of a bad rap, unfortunately, for it, and at least since I've been around, I don't, I don't want to play that, but I don't see how to get past it realistically. Sorry. Thank you.
Appreciate those comments, and I think this conversation is why we're having it, to see how complex it is. Thank you, Chair. Anyone else?
So can you, can you respond to the testimony about the removal of authority to regulate infested material within the island?
So, yeah, so, I mean, my understanding with looking at that is that that section gives us the ability to make rules, and the rules have the ability to prohibit currently. So in this one, the statute gives you the ability to manage everything by permit, flora and fauna by permit only. So my understanding is, the rules already exist, and the, I think part of it is that there's, like, I think, a penalty nexus, but, again, looking at it, we have rules, this enables rules, and I don't see how it changes the penalty, but I'm not also, I'm not a lawyer, so I think obviously we'd, I'd have to go kind of dig into that a little bit more, because that's not something that I caught initially during the look, but it's very possible that, that case, or that change... that case, or that change does create that. And if that is the case, that's obviously a problem. We don't want to get rid of the ability to regulate. That, that's clearly not the intent, at least in my understanding. Thank you.
Senator Lee?
Thanks. Just following up on what you said a little bit ago about where, in which department these kinds of operations are placed and influence the overall mission the department's going to have, you know, health, health focus, ag, etc. In our area, we, and on the Lower Side, had sort of the epicenter of all these different issues kind of coming together where in nurseries that were knowingly spreading little fire ants and invasives, you had Koki frog spreading out in the mountains and just a bunch of different elements that are all sort of touched by these issues. But, and to the point, I think some of the testimony, and there's a lot of concerns out there and we hear it all the time from constituents, that the focus being primarily ag raises questions that I think the community, I don't have good answers for, that I think through this process, hopefully we can get some, some conversation on or at least satisfy people's concerns. Because ultimately, you know, when Koki spread because at certain points the ball was dropped along the way, and now we've got a much bigger problem than needed to be. And whatever the next thing is, whether it's LFA or, you know, who knows what, CRB, whatever's coming down the pipe, how do we ensure that there is that meaningful focus on those things across the board, especially out in the community side? Because not everybody, the average person's not living on a farm every day, but they, they definitely live at home. And if something shows up in their backyard and is wiping things out or causing problems, how do they know that there's actually a priority there and that it's the mission of the department to actually put in the resources and time to eradicate that when, to your point, you know, it might be difficult for staff to get into the back of a valley somewhere or whatever?
Yeah, so, wow, that's, that's, that's a lot. So, so I guess with regards to, I guess, prioritization of, I guess, oh, sorry. So I guess as it relates to, I guess, providing service. So this morning, this is, this is, I guess, a little off topic, but, so this morning, maybe seven o'clock, staff in Hilo got a report of a snake in Pohola. I got the call, we were able to get guys out immediately, we went to the person's house and turned out to be a false alarm, thankfully. The, the individual who reported it is, I believe, I think is starting to have, start dementia, right? But we didn't know, we got guys, paid them overtime, sent them out immediately to do the responses. We do that with Koki on Oahu. And, and I think ultimately, the, the, I guess, the overall picture of how we're going to deal with all these issues, and I, I think, I, maybe, maybe this is not the best example, but biosecurity is like a box, I think, or a picture, whatever you want to do with it. And I think every single agency that has a, a role to play fills a piece of that box, okay? And I think the issue that you have now is that you have the agencies with the statutory mandates to do those things, who should fill very specific portions of this box, have, you know, expanded, contracted, moved around. And then you have the, the folks that are doing a lot of the other work, the gap filling stuff, which is important because the agencies aren't doing everything. And what's happened is the gap filling and the agency mandates are starting to overlap. And how to overcome that, in my opinion, is kind of the challenge. And how we get to there, I, I honestly don't know. That's like realistically above my pay grade. I, I'm a regulatory guy, okay? My job is to enforce regulations to the extent that we can get to the mission in the best way possible. And people may not agree with the decisions that I make as the head to get there for the regulatory agency, right? But realistically, I have steps to get to where I need to go. Like for example, you know, a nursery that's potentially selling infested material. We got on, we got them to treat, and we're still working with them to ensure they're eradicated, right? I think people, we should have quarantined them, we should have done all these other things, right? And those are clearly mechanisms that can be done, but we still got to the same place once we were involved, right? And I get that there is a lot of this lack of trust from the department in that, you know, yeah, we're never always perfect. But realistically, we're not going, you know, at least if I'm here around, I don't plan to stop doing the work that needs to be done because that's my job. That's what I'm paid to do. That's why we report to you folks about what we do and how we draw those lines moving forward. I don't know if that, if that's a legislative issue, if we can deal with that another way, but I mean, that, that's just the way that I, that's the way that I've looked at it.
Yeah, I think the concern is less the way you're doing your job. Because I think your, your, your silo is, is, you know, critical and that's, that's your focus. The concern is more perhaps a couple of levels above, who's making the decisions about where resources go and what the focus ultimately is and which, because there's no way we're solving everything overnight or maybe ever, but which things get attention and which things don't.
Yeah, no, and, and, yeah, so, and I, you know, and I guess, I think, one of the, one of those things now is I think the, so plant quarantine and plant pest control branch, right? We're, we're kind of like doing both unfortunately now. And I think getting that, like particularly that program back up would be extremely helpful, right? They have a lot of the specialized, well, so I guess, the border, post-border, pre-border kind of thing, like, you know, plant quarantine is generally pre and border and, you know, PPC folks are the post-border stuff. And I think that's really where a lot of, at least in my opinion, I think a lot more of the, I guess, the kerfuffle is, because nobody else has authority to inspect, right, at the ports. And, and I think obviously getting more people, you can do more of that for the prevention and at the port issue. And I think after is, I think, really where the issue we have now is like, if it gets past the border, there's not a really clear way of managing a lot of these issues, especially, especially a lot of them when they're novel, you know? Koki really wasn't a problem until they got to Hawaii unfortunately, things like that.
Thank you. Senator Lee? Yes, I'm, I'll make it short. I'm glad that you brought up the issue with regards to agencies coordination. I was kind of surprised Department of Health is not included. Let me say that they do have the vector control division and they do pest controls as well other than, you know, other areas that they cover. And I remember several years ago, the legislature, we created positions, and I think it was probably during COVID time or right after, when we, either, either it had to do the introduction of the fire ants maybe at that time. But what was great about it is because they already do pest controls, they already were out on the field. But I'm kind of interesting that you brought that up. And I, and I agree that not only DLNR and ag, because there's other agencies like DOH and the coordination. So I, I think we, we need to really look at all the areas of, you know, coordination in, in planning something of this nature. But thanks for bringing that up because you are correct. There are other agencies that do a little of each and we should continue to seek that kind of information. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Senator Koyt?
Thank you, Chair Gabbard. First of all, I want to thank you and appreciate all that you and your team does because I know it's a lot of work. So two questions I have is, first I want to talk about the educational piece. You know, what are you folks doing to recruit sort of this next generation of people that want to come and work in this field?
Yeah, so we've been working with the university, Citar primarily. I want to say, I can't, I can't think of how many of the last set of inspectors that we've had, but it's more, it's more than likely the majority are Citar graduates. So this has been something that's kind of been ongoing over time. I don't know how many chairs ago, but, but we've been doing this for a while. And the line inspector positions, I think I have right now, five, five vacancies. So I have one on Oahu, two, two on Maui, one in Kona and one in Hilo. Two of those vacancies were done in the last six months, either through retirement, actually, so yeah, one was December 31st and the other one was the inspector resigned in September. So three, so three of those positions are kind of like more longer term. The Maui and the Kona positions have been historically very difficult to fill. The Kona one, particularly Kona ones, are very difficult for us to fill in that the pay doesn't quite match the cost of living around the area. So that position's been vacant for kind of a, kind of a while. And same thing with the Maui position, I think it's been, I think they've been a little while. But the rest of them, we've been able to, as we've been able to kind of get past a lot of the HR issues, we've been able to pretty much get lists and fill them. And so I think we have some advantages, I think, in, in that a lot of the MQs for the inspector positions are not super specific. And the university where we're getting a lot of our folks from kind of know what the regulation, what the requirements are, basically a bachelor of biological science and then one class in entomology and one class in botany. And both of those are kind of like general courses and they're writing intensive, so a lot of people end up taking them. So they do end up qualifying. So we have, we, we're, and the Leeward Community College is like trying to work on a, kind of like a certificate type thing to kind of help push as, as, should, should a lot of these measures move forward as well.
And the last question I have is, I know this is more of a research institute, PBARC, in Hilo, right? How, how do you collaborate and interact with PBARC? Because I think they're a critical component in terms of being proactive with mitigation as it relates to biosecurity.
Yeah, so when we work with the feds, so PBARC generally, from a regulatory standpoint, we're working with them more to develop tools for ongoing management generally. So pesticide efficacy.
And research.
And, you know, yeah, like ongoing research, you know, things that are better. A lot of the long-term tools, I mean, it's other agencies, USDA for example, Forest Service, Biocontrol, things like that. We work together with, with AFIS for import regulation. We work with SITC for trace forward, trace backs. I mean, there, there's a lot of collaboration there. And I think particularly as it relates to PBARC and I guess the research component, I think there are very specific ways that I think we could utilize them more. We're, we're kind of in the talks now, kind of doing some pesticide trials for CRB with, with them that probably won't start till, till summertime this year. But, you know, I mean, those kind of things, they, they kind of just come as they come. And I think, could we have a more concerted effort? Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Senator Koyt?
Thank you very much for being here. I just want to thank the introducers of this bill and the chairs for hearing this so we can bring this to the table. It very much is an urgency in my community. As you had mentioned in your statement regarding the box and the players in those box, I think that we can all agree that there definitely needs to be urgency. My concern is, is the Department of Agriculture able to execute these tasks? And so, you know, with the continual growth of different invasives, invasives that come up every single year, you know, I, I have a low level of trust when it comes to the department to be able to be hands-on in my community when we do have reports of invasives or when a community member doesn't know what to do. To be honest, we just call ISK or we just call our community organizations that work hands-on. So I'm, I'm hesitant to promote average work with more employees and more funding based on a lack of actual execution, whether it be eradication or just something as simple as containment. So do you folks have actual projects that you have been able to eradicate? And if I had to water that down a little bit, to actually contain any invasive species that we've been able to be upfront and hit it while it's right up there in front as opposed to spending years collecting data, doing studies, and now it's continued to spread throughout the island and maybe even to more islands? So I think that's where, where I would just like to get more confidence from the department when you're asking for these more positions, that you folks are able to do whatever it takes to be hands-on, to eradicate or maybe even soft approach, contain.
Yeah, so with regards to, trying to think of, I guess, eradication specifically, a lot of it is more at the border. Like, you know, we've had red imported fire ant, you go, you destroy. I'm trying to think of a good eradication one, but.
So with the border, the department has been even slow to approach that. So is there, is there any invasive species circumstance that Department of Agriculture can confidently say, eh, we heard about this, we stepped in, we were able to move and mobilize quickly and we killed it?
So the rapid response component happens all the time in, to the extent that we're getting the reports. And again, I guess, I guess, I'm, I guess, I'm, I'm trying to be very, I guess, specific to the extent that it is something that's past the border and there's an incipient population and you're trying to eradicate it.
Okay, and if you can't think of it off the top of your head, that's fine.
Yeah.
I was just asking for one.
No, I, and again, I think, and I think that's, realistically, that's always been the challenge for, I think, any agency that does quarantine type of work. For example, like, for, a, a good example, we'll use New Zealand, who is, you know, I think collectively understood to be one of the better or if not best types of agencies in, with regards to biosecurity. They have, for example, I forgot what fruit fly, I think it's tau, they have a fruit fly monitoring program around their ports of entry. They have 20 FTEs specifically for that one pest, okay? That's like 25% of my entire staff and they're only doing one thing. And when they had interdiction, they were able to mobilize and they have this very massive network which, which this bill does seek to create, to come in and do all the mitigations to get to eradication. That program, I believe they found five fruit flies and I believe it cost them $50 million for that program, okay? We don't have that. And realistically, I think that's what this bill is seeking to do, to give the agency who has the mandate, the ability to do those types of things. Because right now, even if we wanted to do it, even if I wanted to put this type of thing out specifically for one pest, we couldn't do it. I mean, we do do it now for brown tree snake, for example. We have an ongoing program at Joint Pace Proharbor and Daniel Kano International Airport. We do spotlighting three times a week. We have traps, we have detector dogs, we inspect 90, I think it's about 97% of all the flights that come from Guam or other areas where brown tree snakes are known to occur. And then we've been doing that, I can't, I can't think of how long we do that, but we get a federal grant for it, right? And it's relatively, a, a lot of the research and all that type of stuff is not done by the department. That's done by a collective of folks with federal funding for the Pacific. So I believe that this measure, and a lot of the other measures that have been introduced are, is to get the department to that level so that you can start to mirror what a lot of these other agencies are doing.
To what level? What level are you achieving to get to?
Well, so.
Eradication level, containment level?
Well, so, so right now, the, the biggest focus that we have with, within the existing Well, so right now, the biggest focus that we have within the existing authority is prevention at the port, right? That's that unsecure, whatever that thing is, right? Try to focus your limited resources at critical control points. And as an island, we have an advantage with that. Everything got to come through a harbor or a port. And quarantine by nature is not a guarantee. And I think to get to a level that is acceptable for everyone, I don't think we'll ever achieve because I don't think everyone's level is very different. And realistically, we need to, in my opinion, more needs to be done. We just don't have the resources to do it. I mean, like, again, I have, like, for example, in Kona, I have three inspectors for half the island, right? There's a lot of stuff that goes through that port. Kauai, I have two, right? And Oahu, I think I have 31, something like that. But we also get like 90% of the cargo, right? So when you look at the disparities, right, Oahu is like really short. So how do you make those up? The people can't do more. I mean, there are like legitimate limitations. And realistically, the issues that we're facing, you know, as Senator Lee said, right, are ongoing and never-ending. And how we get there, I mean, realistically, is not really, I think, more or less up to me, but do we need to do it? Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Okay, we'll go into, yeah, quick question, Mike. Senator?
Chelsea. Just a comment, obviously this is huge, I don't want to get into long dissertation, but just a comment about the cross responsibility between DLNR, DOA, and just a quick interpretation of all the conversations we've had, your perspective, 30 seconds.
Chelsea Arnott, on behalf of the Hawaii Invasive Species Council. To summarize, we have clear lanes with certain species. The island invasive species committees have a lot of flexibility to work across landowner boundaries on target pests that kind of fall between agency mandates. So they pick up a lot of species that DOA, DLNR aren't necessarily working on or in areas that they're not working on. Where we do have a lot of overlap is when it comes to little fire ant, coconut rhinoceros beetle and koki frogs. And because those pests are multi-agency efforts on each of the islands, we have put together a memorandum of understanding that was signed last April by the leadership at Department of Lands and Natural Resources, Agriculture and University of Hawaii. And that really bolsters our communication. We have monthly meetings. We also developed what would probably be, if I send it to you, very complex matrices that really outline, hey, this is what you do when it comes to outreach, this is what we do when it comes to actual on-the-ground response, this is what we do when it comes to early detection or monitoring. And each of those categories has really detailed actions and each agency assigns whether they're the lead or the assist with each of those actions. Because it is complicated, especially when we're working on containment on some islands and eradication on other islands. And so from those matrices, we've developed response plans. By April of this year, we need to have response plans for CRB, little fire ant and koki frogs. We have them for little fire ant and they're by county because each of those pests are kind of at different stages on each of the islands and have different agencies that are working on those. But just like as a summary, for those more complicated multi-agency efforts, we do have those ongoing communications and MOUs and agreements that help us communicate and make sure we're not duplicating efforts, but also we're not leaving gaps in efforts.
I appreciate that. Chair, let us do it alone.
May I also add?
Sure.
Thank you. I'll keep it very short. Don Chang, Director of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. I just wanted to add, I had the opportunity to actually work on the inter-agency biosecurity plan. And that really was a vehicle to address the different missions. It recognized that DOA, so the three parties to that was DOA looking at agriculture and they have the authority at pre-border and they have regulations. DLNR, who has the authority in our lot of viruses, forest management, watershed protection and the ocean. And then we also included UH from a research perspective. But that inter-agency biosecurity plan addresses some of the questions that were raised about different missions. So there's not a compromise of missions. The intention of the biosecurity plan was to recognize that each of us have different missions. The MOA is a good example of how that inter-agency collaboration works. So that was the vehicle for this coordination, rather than having us compromise our missions. So we have tried to stand our lane. The only agency that has regulatory authority is DOA. DLNR and UH does not.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I guess for both, Kristi and Director Chang.
Kristi?
Oh, sorry. Michelle, sorry, Chelsea.
You missed a couple.
You know, in many ways, that biosecurity plan sounds like a good approach, you know, in combining many different entities that have slightly different missions. I guess one thing that is not entirely clear from the bill is, how would things be improved by placing, you know, HISK and that type of coordination under one department? Would it not be more appropriate for that type of operation to be elevated, you know, in a way that recognizes that each department may have different strengths to bring to the table? And I guess the reason I ask this is, in my area, you know, Kiki Heights, Tantlis and Papua Kalaere, where we have little fire ant infestations, many of the community groups have longstanding relationships with DHHL and DLNR because they're the people that they deal with all the time for all the various issues. So, you know, it seems that we should be looking at how best to maximize existing relationships and building upon them, you know, rather than just sort of moving, you know, different coordination arrangements around, under a particular department.
And thank you very much, Senator Fukunaga. Can I, I can just respond that I think we totally support that. That, I think your question is probably better suited for DOA to answer that. I mean, we believe that if, and there's no doubt, we could do a better job of inter-agency coordination, DLNR, DOA and UH. I don't dismiss that and we're trying to respond through vehicles like the MOA. But we also recognize, it is about inter-relationships and it's about, if the community trusts you and they're going to call, and right now they are calling the island HISK, they trust them, they've seen the value of their work, and we just don't want to jeopardize that because these invasive species, they cross all jurisdictions. And unless we have a timely response to them, we're never going to get ahead of it. So I think, you know, for us, we want to, we want to support DOA, we understand they've got a lot on their plate, but we also believe that the work that we've done with DLNR, with our HISK, all of our island, and our partners like Hawaii Atlant, who has a successful track record to manage little fire ants, that we would like to continue that because they are, these invasive species are not going to stop while we try to resolve this. Thank you.
Okay. Very much.
Thank you.
Conversation. We're going to go into some decision-making now. Okay, we're ready to go here. Chair's having conferred, the recommendation will be to pass with amendments, SB 1100, including the amendments suggested by the Hawaii Department of Agriculture, with the exception of the amendment to clarify the definition for private inspectors. And instead, we will amend that section as follows. An amendment to Section 24, Chapter 150A of HRS is amended by renaming and replacing private inspectors as biosecurity inspectors to be appropriately designated and to read as follows. Quote, 150A-d, biosecurity inspector license. A, the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs shall license and offer training to individuals seeking a biosecurity inspector license. And then further, we will be blanking the appropriation amounts and inserting it to the committee report. And there are also some tech amendments. And we also have various adjustments to the effective date that I will read. Part two of the bill will go into immediate effect. Part three, Section 19, will go into effect on November 27th. Part four and five, Sections 21 to 26, will go into effect January 1st, 2027, except within Section 26 where the Plant and Animal Declaration Form was renamed to a biosecurity form on pages 48 through 50. Part five, Sections 27 through 28, will go into effect July 1st, 2025. Part five, Section 29, will go into effect January 1st, 2027. Part six, Section 31, will go into effect January 1st, 2027. Part seven, Section 32, will go into effect July 1st, 2025. And all the remaining sections will go into, well, actually, we would defect the date on all the remaining sections to January 1st, 2050. So for AEN, Chair's recommendation will be to pass with amendments. Any discussion?
Sure. No, no, no. Just on the DCCA, so normally because these licensing programs are paid for fees by the licenses themselves, will these new inspectors or agents be paying a licensing fee to DCCA in order to run, administer the program like it is with their other?
So, if I may, Chair.
Yeah, sure.
The, the answer would be yes. In the bill now, it contemplates running the licensing through the Department of Agriculture, but the Pest Control Board already licenses fumigators. And so the recommendation is to place the inspectors in the DCCA with the fumigators because there's a, more importantly, there is an enforcement regime through RICO that's already established.
So the fumigators will be paying into the same fee as the inspectors, these agents would be paying into as well?
The proposal is to place them in with the pest control guys.
Okay, so the special fund could be used right away for standing up the agents and then while you're collecting it from the fumigator guys as well?
Okay. Okay, so for AEN, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
The bill, Senate Bill 1100, Chair recommends passing with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Decoy?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Awa?
Aye.
Chair, you have five in favor, motion is adopted.
Thank you, members. Thank you all for participating.